But I'll call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for order.
Barbara, I'm gonna mute you. Okay, go ahead, sorry Jeff.
First item is roll call. We have all our members present, so we have a quorum. I assume you have the staff, are you just?
Yes, just me, that's right.
Moving on our next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of previous meetings, we have the December fourteenth. Minutes, I make a motion to approve the meetings, minute meetings of December fourteenth.
I'll second it.
Move in a second, does anyone have any corrections? No one has any?
I did not.
There no one has any corrections, I'll vote on the, on the motion to approve the minutes as written. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions, motion is carried unanimously. Next item is public communications, do anyone on the commission have any communications to bring forth? They have a couple, I received a letter that was forwarded by the town clerk regarding development of the Sealy School Property of Stritten Square Project. There's a court case that's been submitted against the Planning Commission's decision. And I received a letter from Kevin, I mean from Michael Kane regarding bike, bike storage. And we received this afternoon, correspondence from Zell Stevens regarding Transportation District. The staff have any?
I do not, nope, I don't have anything other than that you have listed out Jeff.
Is anyone on the public wish to attend, address us tonight?
So if anyone does want to address the commission, you will have to raise your hand. I am not seeing anyone raising their hand, if you're an applicant, we'll, we'll go ahead and call on you, but if you want to address the commission as a member of the public, you can do so now. Nope, I do not see any hands raised.
Then we'll move on to our next item would be site plans, we have the SIT. Unless we wanted to introduce that, commit the, the letter that we got from Gerard Development.
Maybe.
Communication.
We can probably.
Just do that.
Under the agenda item, I think.
The agenda item, yeah. Okay, so our next item is SIT twenty-one dash nineteen, the Chelsea Groton Bank Headquarters. Nine oh four Paquonic Road.
Just give me a minute.
Present.
Yes, give me a minute to get them into the meeting. Alright Bruce, you should have the ability to share your screen. I see Amy is also here, let me know if you want me to promote her as well.
Sure, there she is. I'll get started. Good evening everyone, my name is Bruce Bisbano, I am the architect, working on this project for Chelsea Groton Bank, our firm is Bisbano and Associates Architects. We've been working on this project for a greater part of two years and developing a new headquarters on this location. I'm going to share my screen, I'll make sure everybody can hear me okay. And hopefully you can see my screen.
We can, but it is the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Okay, so.
zoning regulations, okay.
Okay, so what I'd like to do is kind of start by showing you what this project is going to look like when we're completed, and I think it'll help you understand the plans. We are basically doing a complete interior renovation of the building. We are also remodeling the exterior, changing the entire front facade and the views from east and west along Paquonic Road. Basically to bring this into the, the current century, this building was developed in the seventies and has a definite aged look about it. What we've done is we've removed the facade of the building and installed curtain wall glazing. It's basically a, a complete transformation of the building. And I'll just walk you through what that looks like, we have signage that will be coming through for permitting later. Really accenting the corner along the plaza entrance. We have a new patio which you see on the site plan, which is on the first floor in the front of the building here with a second floor deck which will be for outside events and for basically employee use. We have a new entrance that we've created, so all the circulation on the property, I'll walk you through that. The circulation is changing both for vehicles and pedestrian access into the building, this will be the new corporate entrance and will also serve as the new branch entrance. As you'll see in the site plan, we have a, a new circulation path for ATMs and we'll be changing and removing the drive up window along the back of the building, converting that to two-way vehicle access to improve circulation. This area is part of the newly acquired site next door, where the building has been raised and this will be branch parking for branch customers primarily and two remote ATMs for convenient in and out access. They're set at the back corner of this lot to kind of mask them also from, from Paquonic Road. And this is a view, looking at it again from the east, and you can see the retail branch is along the first floor. So the retail branch has visibility to the parking lot and customers have visibility to the branch when they come in. Then along the back of the building, as I was explaining, there's currently a drive up window and a canopy in the corner here, that gets removed. This becomes two-way access, so you can come in from the plaza and you can also exit, so when we get to the vehicle circulation on the site plan, you'll see how that flows through. I thought that would be helpful to show you what that looks like. And I'll next go to the package and I apologize for scrolling here, I'd like to start at the first page. Okay. So the, the major circulation change on the plans is the removal of the building next door, that entire site becomes parking and a new entry point. We are removing that full property curb cut along the adjacent property and we are controlling access now to the property with a one-way in right turn only and a one-way out right turn only onto Paquonic. If a customer comes into the branch and does their transactions inside the branch, when they leave, they can go west off the Quonic or they can circulate now behind the building, come out at the light and head east. If you're coming in for the remote ATM, you come in here and you circle into the queuing area, which we've identified on the plan, the queuing spaces. And you have two choices for a remote ATM, so we can stack up. And then you can either leave and again go west, take a right turn here or follow along the back of the building and go east. And that's the basic branch customer access. Corporate customers will be able to park here and use the main entrance, which will be the corporate entrance here. And there's also a secondary entrance into the building along the back, both of these are public, so when you come in, they merge in the center of the building at the reception area. So they'll both be used and we have handicap parking on both sides for convenient access. And then we have customer parking again along the back where it is currently now, but it's two-way traffic. Other things that we've done here for circulation, we have done some work in the back, so we are going to make some improvements to the back parking lot. The major change here is that we are trying to slow down traffic in the parking lot. There's a high velocity rate traversing through the current parking lot, which is a hazard to the bank's employees. So this basically allows us to put a turn in and slow traffic down. And you'll see on the plan, some of the other measures we've taken to help do that, but we wanted to make sure that we maintain that requested access to the plaza on both sides and also to the adjacent building along Paquonic, which has an entrance drive here, we've maintained all of that access. This plan here identifies the extent of the asphalt parking, so we're basically replacing about fifty percent of the asphalt, everything in the front is being done as well as this portion where we're rerouting the traffic flow. And that'll accommodate the change in, in that work as well as some new exterior lighting you'll see in the plan that we have to trench for to get out there. You can see the stops that we put in for traffic and crosswalks as needed for the employees. And there's also crosswalks, we'll see later on, which help out for the public space circulation, getting up to the plaza. Just to zoom into the detail a little bit, if you have any specific questions here, we do show the queuing. We do have the requisite number of parking queue line, parking spaces basically, waiting spaces and the exit space for people to put their items away before they, they make a decision which way to turn. You can see that here and we obviously have all new sidewalks throughout this area, a new ten foot wide sidewalk along the Quonic Road. A new fifteen foot wide sidewalk leading to the building, which has a bench here and there's another bench near the area. We do find people that walk through to get to the plaza and they currently, I take one of two ways, they'll come up and follow this path up to this area which has a bench and they'll walk across to the plaza or they'll come through the back of the building and up the stairs and use the ATM. So we've maintained that and we'll show you that in the public space calculations. As far as lighting, we've provided the study for the lighting, we've kept existing fixtures which are labeled EX throughout the rear parking lot. We have had to add a few in order to meet the requirements for the light levels needed for safety back here. And then we have all new throughout the new parking lot. I do want to point out, there are two lights along the plaza, those are actually on the other property, so they service our property, but they're not bank's property, right on the borderline. So we've accounted for that lighting, so we haven't added anything additional, but that remained existing. Everything from Paquonic Road will appear to be the new style light fixtures. As far as landscaping, we're basically re-landscaping the entire front of the building. We have created that outdoor patio here, which you see here, which is concrete pavers and we've kind of landscaped around that to create an edge so that there's some privacy for the employees. But at the same time, we've opened up the front and the lawn, so that becomes part of the open space and it widens open the intersection. And then we have landscaping throughout to beautify this area which showed up on the renderings. We have a walkway across both entrances here, that is a stamped concrete for the texture change. The island at the three-way turn is actually a brand and concrete island, but it's rated for the vehicles, the fire trucks to get over it, so they can make that turn, that was one of the issues and one of the concerns there. At the back here, this walkway, again stamped concrete that brings you back to this route up to the plaza. And I did want to point out, right where the arrow is, that's an existing utility pole, we spent a lot of time researching removing this utility line which has a pole here and then a pole up on the other property. It crosses the street, so there is no other pole along Paquonic Road, so it, it became basically almost impossible to reroute this. We would have had to do several gymnastic efforts to try to get it to cross the street and make the, the alignment here to get this to work, so we've decided to leave it. And that's part of this island and that's a protected island. And it doesn't impact any of the traffic circulation or the larger vehicles. We also have a dumpster enclosure that's new, that area here, you'll see that elevation, what that looks like, we've addressed three sides of it to match the building. The, the rear side of it is actually a gate, so that's the, the side that has the access point coming from the back, so it's a nice easy access and then they can exit out onto the plaza. And the one other change on the site plan, we originally were maintaining an existing generator that's, that was along the plaza court side. It was actually right on the verge of being in the setback. Instead of trying to remodel that and fit a generator there, the new generator requirements basically needed more space. So we've taken a few parking spaces in this corner, we did have enough to make that work. And we've created an enclosure here, which we have new elevations of in your set, that matches the building, has some louvers along the top, so it has airflow, but it screens the generator. And it's also hidden because that elevation right there, that, that area is about five feet below the grade of the plaza, so that helps to conceal it from the plaza. Other than that, on the set that you were provided, we have identified the vehicle charging stations, we have four. I'll show you those, there's a separate plan for that. The lighting here is what I want to talk about firstly, existing light fixtures are this style of an LED with full cutoff. They're on a dark bronze post. The, the heads that are existing that are on the property line or in, in the other property, those are a different fixture. Those are not these fixtures. And then our proposed fixture is an LED with full cutoff, dark sky friendly fixture, that would also be dark bronze anodized. But we felt this was in keeping with the look of the building, the style we were going for. And there are about seven or eight of those new fixtures, they kind of disappear, so they don't really create they don't detract from the, the look of the building, whereas some of the older style shoe style box would. So that's the lighting. The dumpster enclosure, we spent a lot of time trying to get this to be both matching the building, because it is pretty prominent, when you drive up to the ATM area, you, you come right in front of this, you'll see this, there's landscaping in front of it as well. But this wood texture is a metal panel, that's the same metal panels we're using on the facade. And it's screened, screening a concrete block wall behind it. And you can see on the backside, there's a, on the back has a chain link gate with slats to hide the, thumps from the parking side. The generator enclosure, I'm going to zoom in on that, so you can see where that is, it's basically just inside of the setback, so we shifted it from what we originally sent out last month. And that generator is a new two hundred two hundred KW generator. The portion of the wall that's here is an existing retaining wall, we've matched that wall, it's a concrete wall around here. And then we have the louver system on top, which we have section to show you how that works. On the left of the screen is the plaza parking, so this is dropped down, so the top of the generator, which is eight feet high, is only about three feet higher than the wall, I apologize, the sketch didn't get corrected, the, the louver wall would be to this elevation, the same as the other side. The ten foot mark is supposed to be to the muffler, we have to have that ten feet above grade for exhaust. So this one section right here should be the same height as, as the right side. And in elevation, that basically looks like like that, so the concrete at the bottom with landscaping in front of it and then the, the louver system in front of that, and that's a kind of a gray anodized, powder coated painted louver system. This plan indicates landscape and public space, so there was an original application that went in about a year ago, we were looking to try to achieve the original requirement, now that the requirement has changed to five percent, it was a lot easier for us to achieve. And we have the circulation path that takes you up through to the plaza. Account of four, we have, there's a bench that's existing today, that's actually used, that is used regularly by passersby in this area. We've added another bench in this area for people waiting and one at the corner where the intersection is. And this is kind of what we were thinking for a bench, kind of matching the style of the building. The phasing, I wanted to explain the phasing, so the way this project is going to happen, the bank is actually going to relocate their bank employees, the, the corporate employees out of the building when, when this project starts. And what will happen is we will create a phase one construction area, which will be the, the site work on the building that's been raised. And at that time, the branch bank will be open where it currently is and people will be using the rear entrance. As soon as the new branch is completed on this side of the building, it will be a partial completion, because there's a tenant in this front corner. That, the new entrance would be occupied, there'll be a temporary entrance on this side of the building and we would use this, this area, so once we get into the temporary branch being in place in this corner, we close off the back of the building. This becomes construction area, customers can now drive in from Paquonic, use the remote ATM, use the branch, come into the temporary entrance, the tenant that's in this corner, which is not vacating until January of twenty-three, would be able to use this entrance as well. And you can still circulate out through the two plaza entrances. And while that's happening and we're in this phase, the building will basically be vacant, so the rest of the construction will be phased, phased to, and this will be the construction entrance and loading and unloading. And then phase three would be at the very end of the project, the last two weeks of the project basically, to come in and just restructure this part of the parking lot so we can open up to full customers, at that time, the, the branch, which will only be a few weeks, would just be coming in and out this entrance. And they would be the only customers there at that time, the tenant would be gone. So that's the, the structure of the phasing project. We did include bike racks, those are shown on the site plan, this is a view of what those look like, those are near the branch. And I was mentioning earlier, I was out of order, we have added four electric vehicle charging stations, because of our scope of work, they're not required per the, per the regulations, however, the bank wanted to add them in for their employees and customers. And then as the future takes hold, the more people are using them, we do our provision areas behind the building where we could add additional ones. But at this time, they would be adding four. Think that's pretty much all of the items I wanted to address, the last thing would be the roof screening. And I'm going to go back to the elevations in a second, we had some challenges with the roof screening. We had intended to have the screen in this location and it was a, it was a pretty solid screen, you basically could stand on the roof and not see the equipment. We had structural challenges as a result, it was receiving too much of a wind load and it kicked us into a situation where we were going to have to reinforce the structure of the building itself, the columns, the moment connections and the footings. So we've readdressed that and we are proposing a, a different solution here, which is a more open screen, so it'll be in the same place, six feet high, but it's more open, it would be the same color as the basic color of the equipment, which is a light gray. So we are still maintaining that and you can see the outline here, so it's about twenty feet back from the edge of the building, in the front of the building. And then it follows the, these are the new carpets that we're creating, so those are four feet high. It follows that and then at the back of the building, it's a little bit closer, because there's less of a concern, there is existing equipment that we have to get behind the screen, so we had to push it out a little bit further. One thing I wanted to point out, we are adding equipment to the roof, there's currently six large condensing units on the ground floor on the perimeter of the building, those are all getting relocated up onto the roof so that we can make the exterior of the building look nicer. So we are putting that up, but it'll be within this enclosed area. And just to show you on the elevation, basically, this is the area that we're talking about, so the rooftop screening is in this area here, but again, it's, it's eighteen to twenty feet back from the face of the building, so you really only see it from across the street in the parking lot. Otherwise, everything's kind of hidden, there's only one large piece of equipment on the roof, that's an existing, I think it's a thirty-five ton rooftop unit, that's really the only large piece, everything else that's up there is staying, we're just adding the condensing units. I think with that, I believe I've covered everything that was included, at this point, I thought I would turn it over to you and, and see what questions I could answer and clarify anything.
Okay, and we'll turn it over to the staff for their presentation and then open it up to commissioners for their questions.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Deb Jones, Town of Groton staff. So as you, you may know, this is the first large project we've had in the MTC zone, which is the mixed-use town center. That zoning designation was adopted in two thousand and nineteen, it's fairly new. Meant to be a pedestrian-friendly zone while still accommodating a large amount of vehicular traffic. Basically to encourage redevelopment in the downtown area, wide sidewalks, public spaces and buildings that are oriented towards the street are all things that are required. So as you could see during the presentation, Chelsea Groton will be providing the required public space in front of the building and then up near the plaza where there's an existing table that does get quite a bit of use. The existing driveway connectors to the adjacent properties are going to be maintained. Pedestrian pathways are going to be clearly marked by stamped concrete as required by the zone. And foot wide fronted sidewalk along Route One will be constructed, also required in this zone. And as noted, there will be a fairly large interior sidewalk going up to the front of the building, some fifteen feet wide. As noted, that most of the equipment, the rooftop equipment, the dumpster, emergency generators will all be screened. I haven't had a, a chance to review this revised screening for the rooftop equipment, but it will have to meet the, the regulations in terms of screening all the equipment up top. They have had a challenge with the original design of the screen, so as, as a result of that, staff is recommending that any, any changes from what you're seeing tonight, if there's any significant changes, it be reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The lighting as described, all full cutoff, the zone does require decorative lighting without a real definition of what that is. So as, as the architect has explained, he chose this style lighting because it suits the building. That's, that's all I have at this point and I can answer any questions.
Okay, so open it up to the commission for any questions, I'll start with you Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, I really am impressed with this, I feel really like it does a lot of the things that we wanted these things to do, just want to start it with that. It, it, Bruce, is there a, a, can, can we see the, would be the west elevation?
Do you want to see elevation or do you want to see rendering?
Either, either one would be fine, I just, it was the one thing that I, that we didn't see, I think. E- either one would be fine. I just, it was the one thing that I, that we didn't see, I think. And that is, uh, street.
Okay, let me just get my. Okay. I'm going to try to go as slow as possible because.
No, that's fine.
Uh, let's see, west side. This is the west side. Yeah, facing the plaza entrance.
Yep. What is that? What am I looking at? Just to the left of the sign there down low, what is that business?
Uh, to the left of the sign, you mean in here?
Yeah, uh, yeah, right, that, right there. So right in the center of that, what is that that I'm seeing? Is that doors? Those are two doors going through there.
Yeah, sorry, that's two existing doors. Um. The first door to the right is a stairwell exit door existing. And the door to the left is the mechanical room exit door.
Okay, alright. So those are not public access and there's. Correct. Okay, I, I could, I could see something there, but I didn't quite understand what it was. That's fine.
Right, right.
Uh, the phasing, how long do you expect one of these phases?
So, uh, the, the overall projects start to end, uh, the target timeframe is basically. Um, as soon as we get a permit, so probably, hopefully, uh, sometime in April, that we would start construction. And the timeframe for completion is twelve months. Uh, that's because the tenant doesn't move out until basically like February next year, uh, and then we have to get in there and do that. First floor entrance area. So the first phase, which is to do the temporary branch. Um, it's kind of a permanent branch, but it's half of it. So it's going to act as our temporary branch. And do that parking lot. I think they have targeted for three to four months. Uh, at that same time, while we're doing that, we will start the. Rest of the building because it'll be vacant, but that first portion would be three to four months. And as soon as possible, we want to turn over that parking lot. And open up the two remote ATMs and the branch. And then we can keep going. So I, I think right now we're talking from April to August. And trying to condense that schedule.
Okay, alright. Now, I'm mostly, I just want to make sure that everybody's, uh. Like the fire department has weighed in on the phasing part of it, because obviously that it's going to affect them and then, uh.
Right.
That, uh. It, I guess everything has to be complete. Before we move even from, to the next phase. Is that the idea?
So actually, no. So what's going to happen, and I apologize, I did not bring a floor plan of the interior, but the, the. What's going to happen is the tenant is in the. Kind of the. Southeast corner of the building. And the temporary branch, the entire branch will be in the east corner. So that first floor. Quarter of the building will be. Um, partially renovated. And that'll be the only place that's occupied. Um. The rest of the building is going to be vacated when we start. The bank is going to work remotely and work from other locations. Uh, so that we can consolidate the work effort. Uh, that's how much of a massive project it is on the interior. So that, that's kind of the breakpoint, but the. Second and third floors and the rest of the first floor and the exterior will start. In April. It's just that we will have that. Site closed off. Uh, and just access to the tenant and the temporary branch.
Okay, it all sounds good. Um, the only other thing that I'm. We didn't talk about any drainage. Are we, this is in the Birch Plain Creek watershed, I believe. Uh. Is there, were there any, uh? Things that are being done to the drainage or, or that are different than what's there now?
There are, uh, there's some, some minor improvements to the drainage, basically tying in some drains in the new parking lot. Um, I believe if I can get there without jumping to. Too much in the plan. That there is a, uh, drainage plan in your set, and also I believe a. Report or document from Fussin O'Neil, the civil engineers. Uh, which outlines the. The points you just made about the. The area that we're in, in the requirements. Let's see.
Yeah, Deb Jones here. Sorry, I meant to mention that as well. They are adding a hydrodynamic separator. Um, something that is, there, there is no water quality, um, treatment existing on the site now. So they are going to be improving that with the drainage.
No, I, you know, Birch Plain Creek is stressed as it is and it. Needs all the love we can give it.
It, it, the other thing to note is there's a very minor reduction in impervious surface as a result of this project.
Yeah.
I mean, basi- basically, this is the new connections for the new. Uh, paved area. The site that we're absorbing and the site is becoming merged. So the properties are being merged, uh, that. Uh, legal work is in process now. So that is the extent of the ads. And then I think there's a minor. Adjustment. There's, there's an existing drain. Uh, upper parking lot. We're basically. Adjusting the flows, how to get to those drains, but those drains are remaining.
And will they tie into this system down below?
They do now. Yes, there's actually, uh, you can't probably see it on the screen, but.
Oh, no, I see it.
Ties together, yeah.
Okay, alright.
I'll type.
And then where does this all end up?
Uh, that question is it all, I believe it all is following along. And ties in at the plaza entrance, right here. It's part of that, uh. System that goes on from here. So it's basically.
Okay.
Believe.
Yeah, alright. And then that, I believe, goes across Big Y's parking lot.
That's, that's right, and this charges, um. Back behind where the gym used to be in that plaza. That's right.
Interesting. Okay, alright, that's it. You know, uh, just as a little note for people, Birch Plain Creek is like. More than most of it is underground at this point. I mean, it's covered, so it's. Used to be here, but it's gone now. Anyway, that's all my questions. Thank you. It looks great to me.
Thank you.
Okay. Hell. Yeah, I've got. Just a couple details. The project does in general look great. I see it's a, kind of a tortured site for getting cars from one end to the other, especially with the. The elevation change you have to deal with there, so I appreciate that. And so how the internal traffic goes, it is what it is, and I. Appreciate what you've pulled off on this. Uh, kind of one little concern on the. West end of the site where. You're turning that driveway into two ways. And, uh, where it goes into Plaza Court, the street. And according to, uh, your drawing, which is this, A, A zero one point oh two, which showed the, oh, there you got, you got the, you got the lines on there. And even though it's. Two ways, while you're, this drawing doesn't sort of tell you that it's two ways because you've got lines, arrows pointing one way. And still shows. Arrows. Entire exit onto. The left side there with an arrow left and an hour right. So. Isn't a two-way street there or is it a one-way going out?
Uh, it's. During the phasing of the project, it's a two-way street. While we're. Working on the site because you have to get people around, but at the end of the project. The intent is that it's one because. We can't really get this any wider than it is.
Oh, okay.
The current structure. So it's kind of a part of the phasing to use it as two ways so we can get people around.
Okay. That's, that's the intention. So it's two-way, this is just a, a temporary construction issue. Not an end game. Alright, I didn't pick that up. Um, all, all the other end. Well, not quite. Let's just go to where it connects up to the, your neighbors, your remaining neighbors directly on the right. It's in the barber shop there, whatever is. As you've maintained the exit there, I remember hearing some. Complaints on their part, hoping it would stay, and there it is. The only thing that I'm looking at though is that. It kind of exits out and now you've. You've made more sense of that parking lot, which always was sort of nonsensical, and I think that's why traffic would zip through it because there's just a sort of wide open. It was no good way to go, and now it's pretty clear. But you're still now making. You, you emerge from that driveway to make sharp right turn or sharp left turn, which you kind of don't want to do because it doesn't get you anywhere. Um, and I just wonder if.
Do you mean this way? Sorry.
Uh, well, get to that one. I'm actually doing the one to the left. To, to your remaining neighbor in the little building to the left there.
Oh.
Not to the shopping centers, they're right. That's the guy.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, right, so. And that one is. The twenty-four foot wide, I imagine, is, I'm not seeing the dimension on that, but I'm assuming it's twenty-four, will you wipe? When you take a twenty-four foot wide driveway. And you turn it into a twenty-four foot wide aisle way with cars parked to one side. And only a five-foot radius. On the right side. Which means to make that turn, you swing way into the other side. That's the way a driveway works.
Yeah.
It's a good roadway.
Yeah.
And so I, since this is. This is traffic going through your parking lot. I think I'd be much more comfortable if, if you enlarge that radius. It looks like you certainly have the room to do it. Anything less than ten feet when you're going to swing a car around it. Um, this, this kind of necessity, you've got. Five foot is what you've got next to your parking spaces. You go up to twenty-five foot for some of them, so.
Right, right.
Can you stretch that out to at, at least a ten foot, if not a fifteen foot? It looks like you easily have a room. On either side.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I believe it's there, yeah.
So I would just soon center that to make those, I, I would go for, you know, twelve or fifteen feet just to. Keep cars from swinging completely into the other lane. And sort of. The opposite, right? And there's that bigger. And now on the, I, I keep going back to the right there. And so an opposite sort of thing happening. Is that. Um, I understand the idea of controlling the flow through here. But this having the, uh. Well, that twenty-five foot radius, that's exactly what I'm looking at. Wait, that's nice soft radius for people getting out from, you're right, the adjacent property. Coming. The other direction, it doesn't exactly steer them where you want them to go. If they're coming from.
They're going to do this.
They're, they're going, if, what makes it encourages them to do that. And you don't necessarily want them to do that. That kind of puts them into one bottle like you have in there. You kind of want them to bear to the right and make that wider radius. So I would even say that twenty-five radius should be shoved back and make that a slightly tighter one. So it's. It aims the traffic the way you'd like it to go. Because the perceived roadway is. Is, is that, as you're, you're showing there. That's, that's the road.
Right, right.
The through driveway. So something to enhance that. Yeah.
Roughly somewhere.
Correct. Doing that actually allows you to. E- even easier to shove those parking spaces. To its leftover to make the beer radius and. Still have lots of room.
Okay. Yeah, that's.
And for the, uh, I understand there's, if you go up on your drawing. Farther, yeah, right. Excellent. So there's actually a little ledge that sticks through there up where you've got. It's actually a lamppost up on the top, I think.
Yes.
Yeah, around there. So you're going to blast that out?
Yes.
Okay. Alright. Rest I'm good with. Looks good to me. I love, by the way, the idea of just taking a building and stripping it down to. Its component steel and foundation and starting over again. I think that's a great way to go. From there on, you don't know if it's a new building or a remodel because it's somewhere in between.
Right.
Right, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Anything else, hell?
That's about it.
Alright, Barbara.
No comments. Questions, thank you.
Okay. So, yeah. You there, Sue?
Sorry, yes. I couldn't hear Barbara, so it wasn't. I was on deck.
Do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I do have a few, uh, questions. I was interested, um, in that we kind of changed the zoning and things. Well, when I was with the zoning commission for that area. Um, and I guess Chelsea Groton, as I understand it, um. They're basically. Um, even though they have extra land and everything. Um, there's no intention to add any other types of businesses to rent out or anything. I'm not suggesting the bank is going in the hospitality business, but. They didn't decide to do a mixed-use type. Um, building and everything, um, because you do have. It looks like you have some, uh, land out there. Um, some of it looks like it has mobile homes on it, at least partially. Up with the north, northeast.
There are some, uh, challenging. Uh, le- legal issues with some trailers that have broached the property line. But a good portion of that land in the upper right corner actually is a. Quite a, quite a big drop-off in this area. Of ledge, there's a lot of ledge and there's a big drop-off, so it's really not very. Very practical to be used.
Um, right. Yeah, I can see that, thanks. But.
And, and unfortunately, the bank has decided to take space back actually in this building so they can. Merge all of their corporate functions into this location.
Oh, okay.
So that's what's happening. That's why they're. They're doing this, the, another location in the state is emerging into here. So this will be their primary location for all the corporate functions.
Okay, well, it makes sense because I was wondering why all the extra parking. Was especially a shopping center next door and everything, so.
Right, yeah, well, there's accommodations for approximately, and I. I didn't pull the numbers, but approximately two hundred. Uh, employees in the building.
Okay. Interesting, thank you. That helps. And the other thing, I, I am very like, uh, Michael, very happy to hear about the hydro separator and all that good stuff. Um, given the Birch Plain Creek, uh, does have such issues and everything. And there, uh, it's not too far from there to Long, Long Island Sound, so, um, I think that's a nice positive improvement. But that's all I have. Jeff, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Steve? How are you? Questions?
Uh, just a couple. Um, Bruce, uh, like other, other people were voicing, I think, uh, it's a great job. Nice to see a, um, big investment in Groton. I apologize for my voice. I've been, uh, sick for a while, so. Um, two questions, um, well, actually a couple. The, the first question, y- you mentioned two hundred people working there. Is that, is that an, uh, an increase from what you currently have?
Um, I would say that the. Density is an increase of what's currently possible in the building. Um, the numbers, I would say right now. Probably was built out for about a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty for the bank. And Amy could correct me. She probably has the exact numbers. Amy is our senior interior designer and running this project. Uh, but I think we're around two hundred. It might be two twelve, but, um. The number of employees, a lot of them are coming from, uh, two other locations, and then there, they've built in, uh, a growth factor. For their projections based on their, uh. They track for the next three years.
Okay. Um. You mentioned lighting, uh, you know, that you're changing the light fixtures out to LEDs. Um. I love LEDs, but, uh, as we all know, they, the color that you can get from an LED changes dramatically. Um. And, um, i- is there somebody that is paying attention to that? So we don't have that. Harsh blue.
Right. Uh, let's see, I think we have it on here.
Color temperature somewhere.
Yeah. Uh, don't know if we specified it, but. We, the options with this fixture are. I would, I would like to see four thousand Kelvin.
Four thousand?
Yeah, that would be my goal. Uh, yeah, you're right here.
Yeah, I see the options.
That's right there.
Yeah.
We could, we could certainly stipulate that, uh, what thousand Kelvin would be preferred.
Okay. Um, better than five thousand.
Yes.
Um. Uh, just, uh, if you can zoom up on the, uh, the entrance from Paquannic.
Uh, entrance from Paquannic, on the site plan, on the plan. True.
Yeah, just where you come into the, uh. ATMs.
Yeah, I'm going to go to the. This plant here.
So, yeah, that's fine. So essentially, if I'm driving along, um. And I, I gotta do a one eighty to get in there.
Yes.
And. And then if. Okay, and. Yeah, it just looks tight. So no big, um, SUVs and everything, uh. No problem.
Uh, I mean, Fussin O'Neil ran the vehicle tracking, so.
Okay.
They, they're okay with it. I think the, uh, the issue that we were having was the. The concerns, the fire department returns coming in out here.
Yeah.
Uh, but we were able to, uh, accommodate that. But we did, uh, look at that, Fussin O'Neil did look at that for vehicle tracking and it should be able to accommodate a standard, you know. What, what's today's standard large pickup truck? I wouldn't. Suggest that you could put a, uh. Like a. Thirty-five hundred. Like a thirty-five hundred dual access. Rear trucks were there, you know, uh, that's.
Okay.
Not, you're not gonna, uh, the landscapers aren't gonna go through. For the ATM, I think.
Gotcha. And then, uh, the last question is on EV chargers. Are those, um, what are they? Clip, a class two, is it?
I, I have to pull the spec on, but that's, this is the placement for them.
Yeah. And those are for employees only?
Uh, I mean, they could be used by the customers, but the, the issue here is the customer transaction time, the average time is ten minutes. Uh, so it's not really a benefit. Um, it's not like you're shopping and spending a lot of time there.
So these are gonna be shut off at night or unpowered?
Uh, I don't think we've even had that thought.
Okay. Cause I mean, some of it, like the ones at the municipal center are open twenty-four seven. Anybody can drive up, right?
Right. That, that would be something I would say I'd have to come back to with a, an answer on. I hadn't thought of that and.
It's just a, you know, it's just a question. Uh, I, you know, I think you guys did a great job. That's all I got.
I just wanted to see, I might have the specification for you, the, the question that you had on the EV. But I may have to. Answer that later. I don't have that here.
Okay. Mostly outside. Or requiring, you know, the two are better.
Kevin?
So, um, Chair, Mr. Chair, I really don't have any, uh, questions. Um, I know you're gonna call on Deb Jones and staff, so I know there's a proposal here with notes. So I'd just like to listen to that. Um, one is regarding obviously the, um. The roof. So that's the only thing, but I think the staff, um, answered my questions actually when I received that this afternoon.
Okay. I don't have any. No.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask one more?
Oh, yes.
Please? A- after everyone else speaks, then I start thinking when they say, uh. Bruce, the, uh, exit which turns left onto Plaza Court. There's no radius there, but there's a left-hand turn? Or, or is that gonna? How do you, how do you make that left-hand or the coming in? There's no radius on the end of that sidewalk right there?
Um, yeah, so I think that's, the, the idea is that permanently that's gonna be exiting. Uh, the, the temporary use was the, was the issue coming in.
Okay, all right. So you're, you're, uh, imagine, okay, the, the turn that is happening out in the street.
Right.
Okay, and people will. Oh, that's one way. Okay, okay. That answers that question. And then a question for staff, Deb, uh. Is, does this not qualify? I, I know, I appreciate you putting in the electric vehicle stations, but. What is the reason that it doesn't qualify? Cause it seems like we're doing more than fifty percent, or was this application submitted? After our regulations were adopted?
Um, no, no, it was not. It wa- it is under the current EV, um, regulations. So they, they did present, um, a calculation that showed that area of disturbance. Um, and it is just less than fifty percent, so they're not required to, uh, meet those regs.
Uh. How, how is that calculated? I mean, it just seems like the whole parking lot's being redone and that's being, what does disturbance mean?
No, no. So there's a, a large parking field to the north, but they're not disturbing.
Oh. Okay, sorry. I don't mean to laugh.
No, no, I know, I know.
Okay. All right. There you go.
Yeah.
Anyway, I appreciate them being there. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I didn't have any new questions to raise. No, I am impressed with the presentation of the. Work on the site thoughts.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask another one?
Well, thought out. And will be a plus for the, for the town.
Uh. Can I ask another question, please?
Yes.
Okay, we're just regard to the, uh. To the roof screening. One thing I did notice is that. Well, one. We said any change, but do we know what the other screening is going to be? We're okay with it being. Kind of transparent. I think we're okay with that, but. Do we have any idea what that is right now?
Uh, we. We developed a sketch with the engineers that would comply. I'm trying to see if I can find that sketch for you, um. Because it's been a rush to get it, uh, solved.
Okay. Do I assume that there's the, the very, the existing very large unit on the top? And that's not getting completely screened?
Correct.
It looked like it was just clearly up, but it is now. You can't see it now. It's not ter- it's not a terrible looking unit. It's probably, but it's an enormous bus sized box.
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, it's not, we're not. We're not changing that. Uh, it'll be screened more than it is today, basically.
Okay.
But, let's see if I can find it. Deb, did you, I'm sorry, I can't see who's participants. Did you say that Amy was on?
Um, she is.
Is. Not sure if she has access to that sketch.
I'm trying to find it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I saw it today. I don't have it on my computer, so.
I found it. I'm sending it right.
Thank you.
Yep.
So this is what the engineers, uh, came up with for a sectional area that they could. Uh, meet the structure on. So this is six feet high. And it's basically a five-inch tube. Five-inch diameter tube. Um, fifteen inches on center. Starting at the top and then the, the bottom, which doesn't really have much impact. Uh, is further off the ground. And then this gets tied into the structure. Through the roof, we have to basically boot the roof and put, uh, curbs on the roof to attach it. Posts would be probably in the order of eight feet on center.
Hmm. It looks awfully transparent. Hmm. Sorry, that's six foot, is it six inch? It told us six inch diameter. That one, yeah?
Uh, but. I'm pretty sure they're five-inch diameter tube. So there would be a ten inch. Ten inch spacing between them.
And spacing between them, five inch, so it's the only thirty-three percent screen. Pretty good gaps. And. There's the, the verticals are se- separated how far apart?
Um, I didn't get their calculation. I'm assuming, looking at this, it's eight feet. Would work. Structurally.
I can't say I'm in favor of that. That's, that's just really. Transparent.
The, the basic calculation is one-third of the area is blocked. Uh, and they use round to help the airflow, so they don't restrict and gain the.
Yeah. Yeah, I, 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 I understand the, the makeup of it. It's. You know, it's a giant guardrail is what it is and therefore is pretty good for wind.
Right.
And then one-third. Can be good when it's, when it's ballisters. In this case, it's gonna be widely spaced. And when I see it from an angle looking up the street, one way or the other, I'm gonna see right through it. So I think I might even be more in favor of, of the, the verticals were. A little tighter together. So as soon as you get an angle, then you've got it blocked from another direction.
Okay. Let's do.
So I can still see letting lots of air pass through, but, uh. Having the verticals that far apart, it really will just be a giant guard, a giant guardrail, six foot high. The giant guardrail. But, uh. Five foot, five inch, well, five inch. Is that really thirty percent? It doesn't come out to be thirty, thirty-three percent then, right?
Uh, well, we have fifteen inch spacing and five inch. Ballistics, so it'd be. A third coverage.
Fifteen inch, five inch. Except for the two foot on the bottom.
Yes.
It kind of, it kind of doesn't count because I, I agree, you don't know the first intention, so.
Yeah.
All right. That meets the letter of the law, but I don't know if it's gonna meet the. What we're shooting for. I think it'd be much better if at least it was narrowed down in terms of the, the separation of the verticals.
Do you gain anything from having the, um, you said this is setback about twenty feet from the edge of the building?
Yes, yes.
I mean, just from the geometry of it, are you, are you gaining anything from the corner of the building? Do you have any, you know, visuals on what that would look like?
Yeah, if I can get to the renderings. So for example, the straight-on view, uh, here. Uh, we're showing it back that far and. And this is basically. Four feet high. And, you know, you, this one here is four feet high. Um. And you don't really. See the equipment. Uh, and you don't see much of this.
Yeah, that's the goal.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think in this case, we've got a, a parking lot, a, a well-visited parking lot across the street and CBS in that area there. So that's one of the viewpoints we're looking at. So that has a, a much, uh, lower angle to see. And in the back of this building, it's, it's raised up by eight, ten feet. I don't know how much it is up that point. So you have a, a lower angle on that side, too.
Right.
So, uh.
I mean, we, like I said, we originally had a, a louver system that, uh. Basically would be full coverage, um, but structurally we can't accomplish it.
Right.
Um. If, this will be an improvement over what's there. This has been there for fifty years, so it's, it's better than, I guess. Uh, the alternative of doing nothing, but. The engineers reverse engineered it so that they don't go over the. The limit where they have to then reinforce the building. That's kind of how they. Came back to us with this sketch.
Yeah, I, I, I understand the structural necessity of it. Just wanna make sure we end up where we'd like to be. Because your, your building, your new design, doesn't seem to have anything to do with having tubes up on top. It's a. It's completely far into it.
Right.
There's nothing that it matches, so at least it should do the job rather than just call attention to itself. I think, uh, looking at the angles from the street, I'm looking at a Google street view right now and. It's possible that even a little bit more of that. Giant, giant, your middle will actually be covered. But then we'll have this giant guardrail up there. But it's all gonna be painted with the same kind of flat gray or something like that. We're gonna try to make the whole thing just blend in.
Right. I mean, the other option would be to make it smaller towards the middle more. So that it's set back further. Um, it wouldn't capture all the equipment, but it would capture the larger equipment.
No, I don't think spinning it back further was, would do the right goal, though.
It won't, it won't. Not for that reason. Now, you wouldn't see it, but then again, from a distance, it'll do its job, but from up close, it's not really necessary from within. You know, a hundred or two hundred feet. It's really.
No, you're not concerned with it. And walking around the building, you won't know anything's there anyway. So I'm not concerned with that. We're talking, talking about. We've had, just say, no, we're, we're hypersensitive to this. We've had some really terrible surprises recently.
Right.
And, uh, they're almost insoluble once it's up there. So I just wanna make sure we're really thinking about what this is. When it gets up there. So six foot high. How tall off the roof is that? That enormous unit that's up there now, you know?
Uh, we do have that information, Amy. I'm not sure if you have it.
You kind of showed it on your elevation in a thin little line, but is it like eight foot? Is it ten foot?
I wanna say it's like seven foot six, but, um.
Yeah, that sounds right to me, but I'm checking.
Unfortunately, both of my computers are tied up on the presentation. Um, all right.
Well, I suppose it's, it's kind of.
It's about, it's about seven.
If you don't, that if it's at, at six foot, it's gonna hide a little bit more of the giant unit up there. Than we're doing now, which is not at all, almost not at all.
Right.
So I, I guess we'd have to live with that. This guy, Carlos, kind of looks at a distance as if you've got a roof deck. I mean, it's gonna have that sort of appeal to it.
Right.
But. I guess that's the way it goes. All right, I have no further objection. I guess that's the best you'll do.
All right. Okay, we have, um. Any other questions? If not, uh. We have a motion that's been distributed as the. Applicant, uh, seen the, uh, proposed motion, Deb?
Yes.
Does he have any? Has any expressed any concerns with it?
Uh, not to me.
I know, I know. I don't believe I have any. I do. Think I have it here as well.
We're including those radius changes as technical.
It's technical items, right?
Okay.
Yeah, I'll go on the list.
Well, we have none, no. No, uh, questions on it. I'll make a motion then. To approve a site plan. To approve. The site plan. S I T twenty-one dash nineteen for the Chelsea Groton Bank headquarters, nine oh four Quonic Road. With the following modifications. One, the lots known as nine oh four and nine twenty-eight Quonic Road. Shall be combined prior to the. To filing the site plan in land records. Two. A note, note shall be placed on the final site plan that states, quote. Any revisions to the plan required by the Fire Marshal. Groton Utilities, the Connecticut Department of Transportation. Or any other outside agency. Requires review and approval by the Office. Of Planning and Development Services. Or the Planning and Zoning Commission as appropriate. End of quote. Three. And I like to just change this substantial all but here to say any reduction in effectiveness. To the rooftop screening must be reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission to ensure compliance with section eight point one dash seven. Four. Technical items as raised by staff shall be addressed. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll vote on. Who squeaked? Got noisy mice. So. There are no other, no comments on the motion. We'll vote on approval of the motion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. And good luck with your, uh. Restoration of the building. Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
He was very impressive, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is we have a site plan twenty-one, twenty-two Gerard Parking Expansion. Okay, the next item is we have a site plan twenty-one, twenty-two Gerard Parking Expansion. Of which we received, uh. A letter this afternoon requesting post comment. As a review since the applicant can't attend tonight. So. Do we have to accept the, uh? The extension, Deb, or is that automatic?
No, it's automatic.
All right. So we have thirty days now to. To act on this. So we'll leave it on for our next, uh, next agenda. Okay, no old business, no business. We have election of officers. We have two officers. Chairman and then the vice chairman slash secretary. So I'm. Open the, uh. Wow. Somebody has some feedback going on.
I think it's maybe Barbara.
Do you have something going on, Barbara? Two items.
I think it's a mic and speakers. Yep.
Oh, like, uh, Hal had a problem with that.
Yeah. Hal solved it. Barbara just solved it. But Hal was some time ago, yep. I was talking their way, it looks like, but I'm not hearing them.
Okay, we have two officers to be elected tonight. We'll start then with the, uh, chairman.
Mister Chairman, I would like to nominate, uh, Jeff Pritchard, yourself please, as chairperson and Halzad. Uh, I appreciate all of your work as, Halzad is secretary. I appreciate all of your work.
Okay. Have two, two for one. Does anyone have any other nominations?
No, no other nominations, but point of order. Do alternates vote in this, uh, Mister Chair?
Oh.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
No, they're not numbers. Or they're alternates. So you have no others? I'll move to, uh. Where do we have a second for Mike's, uh, nomination?
I'll second it.
Okay. Then I'm. Is there any discussion on, uh, on the motion and on, um, move to vote on the, on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any abstent, any? Opposed? Any? Okay, so. Any abstentions? Hearing none, then the motion is carried. Next item is new applications. Do we have any new applications, Deb? Referrals, we have one referral for. Furti or Garage ninety-nine Warren Avenue. Do you want to make a statement on this? I'm very confused with some of these.
Yeah. So.
Statements and arguments and how a hundred and twenty feet on the. Frontage affect the going into the right of way.
Uh, that, that's an explanation as to how it ended up in the right of way. Apparently the original variance plan that went with the original variance was not accurate. But this request.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
This request is just to convert the existing garage, an accessory building. To be for human habitation. My understanding is they are not planning on making this. An accessory apartment, but it will be more of a. A man cave, I guess, to use the vernacular.
Little outpost. Well, is there something that has to be done with a property being in the right of way? You know, not as a zoning issue, but is it trespassing on? On town rights? What if they, that right of way, when they turn the building down?
Excuse me. No, but sorry, hold on. No, uh, Public Works is aware of this. And they have, I'm sorry, they have no objection to it.
Okay. I don't have objected to the zoning part, but what happens? Well, does any action have to be taken because it's in the town right of way?
No.
Hmm. So it. I guess in a small street like that, nobody'd ever go that far and, I mean, need to do anything with that right of way.
It's actually an unimproved street. Driveway.
Yeah, okay. So does anyone have any concerns with this? I am. We won't make a comment. So we'll have no comment then.
Green.
On this referral. You okay, Deb? So I have no comment on the referral. Okay, then we'll move on to the. Report of the chair. They did sign the, the drawings for. Factory Square Micro Apartment in Building C, the first one that was presented several months ago. Uh, I've had a discussion with, uh, requiring. What we can do with these applications that we have to act on on the night. Of the meeting. Where there's no extra time. If we had some questions, the noise questions that came up on, on last month. To see if we can do something to, uh. Make sure we don't get ourselves in trouble again with that. Which might be as simple as just providing a, a schedule of when things are due to be acted on. That we see like the ASP list. I noticed when I went to town hall or. Went to look on our, the town website. For all meeting minutes that there's several. Minutes. Over the last year that have not been filed with the town clerk. Is that a problem, Deb, that you know of?
No, I, I wasn't aware of that. We'll let them down.
Well, I mean, are we behind or on something or is it just in the town clerk's office? They haven't gotten around to it?
It's just a posting issue, yeah.
Oh, okay. I was just surprised to see that. I mentioned it to, to the town clerk when I was in there. Couple of weeks ago and, uh. I guess there's on file somewhere, so she doesn't have them. They still exist. Okay. On our. Suspension of cannabis. Are we, do we have a date on when we might see something? A rough date, not to hold you accurate, but.
No, I'm hoping in February we'll have something.
So I don't want to lose sight of that then.
Yeah.
Hmm. And then we had, uh, a letter from Mike Kane that I assume he wants to address.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. I mean, I, I.
Get to that.
Okay.
No, that's all I had. So if we want to move on to report a commission. We can, uh. And on. That letter that we received, uh. Late this afternoon on the Transportation Center. Could we print, put that on our agendas to discuss next month, Deb?
Sure, we can do that.
Unless we're tied up with a large amount, but. I think sometime we should address the. With what action we take with. Self-requests.
Sure, we can put it on the next agenda.
Yeah, unless it gets awful busy and then, and then that's all I had. So report a commission. I saw Mike wants to address his bicycle storage.
That was my calculator firing off there. Um, I just wanted to, I, I wrote that, that letter and I wanted to thank Deb for. Checking all my numbers and everything, but I just, I feel like, uh, I, I know that I've. At, I keep asking this. Uh, for applicants and I, I think that it's something that we need to sort of like, at least have a conversation about. And then mostly my concern is not so much with, uh. Retail or commercial spaces. But the residential, um. It, it just seems like, uh, you know, when you have a three-bedroom apartment. To have only parking, only, uh, bicycle parking outside and so little of it required. Uh, that, that it seems like it's a, an issue. Um, there is a. Part of our regulations. Uh, eight point two, one, seven point D. Uh, provides for internal facilities, but it says that they may be provided. Uh. For, uh. You know, for bicycles. Um, i- if we just simply change that to must. Instead of may. I, I think it would, you know, uh, I don't think people want to get on bicycles that are, have wet seats. And I know that, that the cable systems on bicycles rust almost immediately if they're left outside. So I, I don't know where we would go with this, how many. But, um, I think that we need to have, especially in residential, multifamily homes, some indoor storage. Must be required, I would say. Um, I did the numbers just quickly in my, you know, I drove through the Big Y parking lot. And that has. About, I think there was about two hundred and eighty parking spaces in Big Y, which. Uh, if you can imagine that parking lot from Grand's Package Store to the. To the Big Y, not including the old theater, not including in front of CBS. That's two, about two hundred and eighty, I think. And so at our current regulations, that would require, uh, five percent of that. So you're looking at fourteen, fourteen bicycle spaces in there. I think the only thing in there that I would. Like to see a sort of like tweak maybe a little bit is that there. When you get a parking lot that is that big, that we spread them out a little bit so that they're not all concentrated in one area. I mean, Big Y does provide cover for, uh. You know, their shopping carts, they have dedicated spaces for parents with children and. Employee of the month and a lot of other things. I, it would be, uh, I think a nice, uh, feature in a place like that if you saw. You know, a dedicated spot for bicycles. That's it. I just, I, I would like to see if other people, you know, what they think, but it seems to me mostly the residential. These numbers are just so. Insufficient, it seems to me. That's all.
Okay.
About twenty years ago, twenty-five years ago, maybe now. And for twenty years before that, we kind of went through a phase, I think in the country. Where it wasn't so much providing indoor spaces, but it was providing enclosed spaces for bicycles. Outdoor bicycle lockers became a thing. I know when I first came to Subbase, we had. I don't know, hundreds of them, but probably fifty or eighty of them. My university, Pennsylvania, so the, Penn State University started, started putting up. A thousand of these things and they, over the time they disappeared. They just weren't as much of a thing. The difference being though, I think. So the technology's still there. The products are probably still there, whether or not it's interior or enclosed. I don't know if we care about. Interior makes more sense. Uh, it certainly bridges the gap between everybody's uncle wanting, going to want an electric bike. Before, it was only people who wanted a bicycle. Would, and now more people are going to be doing it. So maybe it is certainly a perfectly valid thing to either do indoors or enclosed. And I don't know if we care which, so long as you have it, having a garage for your bike works just as well as having it. In the first floor of the, of residence. I think a commercial is a different thing. I don't know. We definitely should be providing a lot more bicycle spaces for electric bikes. But I don't know if it's valid yet because we just don't have, I'm not seeing them. Eating up any parking spaces yet.
Hmm.
So maybe it's something we need to ease into for that.
That would have been possible to, to, uh, get other. Or review other towns around to see if they have any. Or, uh, rules for, or regulations for bicycles. Storage.
We can do that. Um, I just, excuse me.
Or with the cog, have the one that maybe question a cog to see if that. Cause I've never seen very many bikes around. Maybe because there's hills and misting. I mean, you see a few people using them, but not very many.
Um, so I think there's two separate sections that Michael is talking about here. I mean, one is basically bicycle parking. Um, someone who's using their bike to go to a shopping center or something and just needs to temporarily store it and they can do with a car. The other is. Storage, um, at a residential multifamily dwelling. Um. We, we used to require storage for every single unit. Um, and with the new regulations, we, we backed off on that a bit, um, hearing from the consultants that really, you know, it's kind of market driven and we'll let the market decide. Um, and so there's a lot less that's required. And when you're thinking about storage for these multi-unit developments, you. You may not just want to limit your thoughts to the bicycle. You know, if people have kayaks, people have stuff. Um, so you may want to think about. Um, you know, requiring more storage for more of the units. But I, but I just think there's two separate things. One is, you know, sort of a parking. calculation and the other one is really a storage kind of thing.
Yeah, I think it's a storage is probably the bigger one. The other one, bike racks are easy to.
Right.
The storage may not, but maybe you could ask the cog.
Yep.
To see what they have and see if we can do anything. But certainly probably large units. Large places with a lot of units would be something that would be useful.
Yeah, no, I, I just see these, when I started to do the numbers and you're looking at, you know, how many apartments are in these things? If you get a three-bedroom. I mean, it really becomes an issue for people if they have kids. Or, you know, I don't know what. And I also know this, that people. Uh, like my wife's about, uh, two years ago started riding her bike to work primarily and we're only, we're close to where she works. So it's really great. But we were able to go down to one car in our house from two because she just doesn't need it that much. So my other point is that I think that. You know, I, and, and we'll just have to watch this stuff, but I think that maybe we would be able to offset some of the vehicle parking. You know, a little bit if. And, and for different buildings. You know, when I saw the one go up, which was, uh. The massage therapy conversion, when that went to apartments and they didn't have any space for indoor bicycles. That, that to me is a, a perfect example of where people could live. Work in the area, ride their bikes, you know, you could, or everything is so convenient to that, or even the one at Triton Place. Um, really should have had some sort of a bicycle garage or something, I think, for the people who live there. That's all. Anyway, hopefully we can figure this out. Thank you, Mister Chairman, for that.
Does, does anyone have any? Any of the commissioners have anything to report on? Everybody's quiet.
Quiet crowd.
Report, report of staff. You have anything else to add, Deb?
No, I don't.
Okay, we have attached as the December ASP report. Our next meeting is January twenty-fifth. No one has anything else and I'll accept the motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
It's moved in second.
Can I do that?
Yes.
Okay, we'll see you in two weeks, folks.
Thank you all very much.
Bye.
Thanks.